It's called the February 4th, 2016 School Board Meeting to Order. George, could you take a role?
Sure.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa? Here. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, that brings us to our district goals. At this point in the meeting, we always state our goals: student achievement and financial prudence. Every decision we make as a board reflects those two goals. We also respect the fact that they sometimes are competing goals. We'd like to do everything that we can, but we have to stay within the confines of what the taxpayers provide us, and we're very thankful for all that they provide us. So we try to be the best stewards, we work every day to be the best stewards of their money, and do the best we can. So with that, that brings us to item number five on the agenda. Tonight, we do have public comment. Donna Caputo, we have one. If you want to take the podium? You have to state your name and address. And then, comments are limited to three minutes, and it's not a discussion. It is your comment, we listen. So, thank you.
My name is Donna Caputo. My address is 17579 Brandywine Drive, Strongsville. I'm the president of the Strongsville Athletic Boosters. It has come to my attention, at the last board meeting, comments were made regarding the Athletic Boosters. I watched the video to see what had been stated, and was chagrined to hear critical comments regarding the Strongsville Athletic Boosters and our alleged reluctance to fund the weight room at the high school. It is my understanding that it has been confirmed that there was a miscommunication, and that everyone agrees we had not been asked to do so, nor provided an estimate for the work to be done, nor been given information relating to the timetable, nor how much was thought relating to this funding. I wanted to clarify this, but in addition, this provides a good opportunity for me to explain who the Athletic Boosters are, what we do, and what we fund. We have a very dedicated group of volunteers, and our only sources of funding are dues, contributions, and fundraisers. We receive no money from ticket sales nor advertising, except for the fall sports programs, but only from our collective hard work and effort. We also receive none of the pay to participate money, as I'm sure you know. Some of our fundraisers include parking at the football games, fifty-fifty at the football games, advertising and sale of fall sports programs, membership dues, hosting a golf outing, basketball tournaments, and raffles. Unfortunately, the income this year from the basketball tournaments will be very negatively affected because of the various gym closings at the high school. We're trying to make up for some of this revenue by selling food and beverages at the Cavs games and fifty-fifty tickets at the Monsters games. We have traditionally supported every sport, and there are twenty-four sports at the high school. And we have appropriated funds for each sport each year, as well as for the athletic department and the athletic trainers. I gave you a listing of the 2014-15. It's a partial listing of some of our expenditures. Some of these expenditures include, but not limited to, the following: paying for impact concussion testing each year, which is concussion testing for our athletes; purchasing almost all sports uniforms; paying for all golf course fees for the boys and the girls; paying for the gymnastic facility rental; paying for seminar fees for coaches; purchasing equipment as requested by the athletic trainers and coaches; purchasing the new record boards at the high school. We also generally, each year, purchase machinery requested by the trainers, which is used in the weight room. The Athletic Booster's purpose is to try to supplement the athletic department, and we pay for tens of thousands of dollars of expenses of our athletes each year. These expenses are requested by our coaches, trainers, and the A.D. We also play a supportive role to athletics. For example, two seasons ago, Rademaker-Miller Road was closed for several football games. We called the police to ask for extra support with traffic control, and we also helped to reconfigure parking lots to accommodate our fans. At the football games, we sometimes make signs welcoming our opponents. We decorate, give directions, and generally attempt to help our fans with their needs. I've been involved with the Athletic Boosters for almost fifteen years, and I know that all involved, including our members, coaches, parents, and many volunteers, have spent and continue to spend hours of their free time to help to raise funds for our athletes. I would also like to thank our coaches, who spend countless hours with our athletes and teach them not only the joy of their sport, but also leadership skills, cooperation, and team unity. In closing, I would like to mention that we have two upcoming fundraisers that we are involved with. To quote a statement that was made at the last school board meeting, "Unless you are involved, you do not get to be critical of it." Therefore, I'm asking you to be involved and to help us. We're having a community breakfast at Applebee's on February 28th, and we are in the initial planning stages of our golf outing in June. Everyone is invited. If you do have any questions, I am happy to respond, and I also invite you to our board meeting, which will be February 8th at six o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me, let me express, in the last board, in the last board meeting, I did say that, you know, I was under the impression that there was a direct ask to the Athletic Boosters for the, to help us fund the weights in the weight room. We did, there wasn't a direct ask, and we're getting to the bottom of that, and I'm a little disappointed that there wasn't. But I admit that there was a communication problem, and that there should have been a direct ask, but there wasn't. However, here's my frustration. As president of the school board, as a vice president, as any member of the school board or administration, or a vice president or president of the Booster Association, I don't think you get to say, "No one asked me." With all the things we're doing right now in this athletics excellence program, we are trying to turf two fields. We're rebuilding a weight room, we're rebuilding a wrestling room. We're redoing every gym in the high school. We're building a whole new middle school with, with a number of gyms, and we've got all kinds of projects going along with that. I agree we didn't ask. I'm disappointed that no one came and said, "Can we help?" So that's where my frustration came from. However, that being said, we're all in this together. We, obviously, you've got a board that, and, and I don't know, it's the first time in a while, you've got a board that is actively concerned and actively wants to take the athletic programs to the next level. We're working hard. George and I walked in the advisory committee of the, of the construction project. We walked the high school, and we said, "Okay, where can we save some money? What can we do? We want to make the athletic programs better." You know, we found George and, George and the architect.
Radwell.
Radwell. Came up with the idea that we wouldn't have to replace the bleachers, we could take that. So we're shifting money around to do this. But the whole time, you know, it would've been nice if someone would've said, "Hey, how can we help? There's a buzz going, there's a lot of things going on. So let's just get together, we'll get over this. I'll come to the next board meeting, your next booster meeting. I'll be there, I'll be at the fundraiser, and we'll, we'll all get together and we'll see how we can do this. But we need your help. This district isn't, what we do every year, and we express this to Cameron and to Jenny when they were hired, that what happens every year isn't acceptable anymore. What we used to do, and what we do day, year in and year out, I know it's hard work, and I know it's good work, but no one, no one's standing pat. We're taking this whole game to the next level in academics, in arts, and athletics, and we all got to pick up our game. And I'm willing to do it, we're all willing to do it, and that's what we're doing. So that, I mean, that's just how it is. And, so that was a source of my frustration. I apologize if there was a miscommunication on the direct ask part, but that still doesn't let anybody off the hook.
And I'll actually address that, that's why I stood up there.
No.
How are we supposed to know what you need? You don't have to.
I want to address that. Donna, I would do, because I was, Donna, please. We're not in court. This is going to be my time, you had your time, and let me address, let me address my comments, please. Is that okay? This is a public, this is not a public meeting, this is a meeting held in public, Donna. And we have those rules on purpose. Now, you and I had a conversation, three actually. If you look around in this room, and the faces in this room, everybody here's a volunteer. Everybody in this room, and I'm looking at everybody from teachers to administrators to people who have donated their time for no money, and then this Board of Education. And we do it for the kids. There's no mystery that we've put millions of dollars into our facilities. The one thing I did not know, and the one night, one thing that did come out of this whole situation, is that I've seen or met you, having been, you have been involved with our Athletic Booster for fifteen years. I started coming to these meetings, and Jane and I were sitting in the audience the very first time. It was about four and a half years ago. It's the first time I've ever seen the Athletic Boosters come into a board meeting. And I've been to, I've been to almost every single one in four and a half years. The Athletic Boosters and all the other 501(c)es that are within this district benefit off the taxpayers. They benefit off the fact that our facilities, our parking lots are going to get repaved, we're hunting for turf, which will provide more opportunities. I think everybody here needs to remember that we're doing this for the kids, and we need to take our egos out of it. Today, I spent, and, and Richard was the one that introduced me to this, we went to the PTA Founder's meeting today, and it was wonderful. There was a, a mom from Chapman that said, "I'm just privileged to do this for my kids and for yours." There was a teacher from Chapman, I'm sorry, from Albiot, and he said, "Not only do we get to teach, but we get to learn from our children." I think what's important here is that we get this done. Tonight, you're going to find out exactly those numbers and figures. I was very critical of the boosters. I'd like to thank and apologize to the rank and file, but it's a two-way street. Plausible deniability doesn't really help the kids. What we need to do all now is work towards the means of getting new equipment in that locker room. So let's take the, the egos out of it. And again, if you have any news, and you and I had this conversation on the phone, if you have any news about the boosters, I'll be more than happy to address that on camera so that we can make sure we help the boosters as much as we can as far as your different events.
Well, I'd like to know how we're supposed to know about, if you haven't asked us to fund the weight room. We don't, I've never seen an estimate, we don't know anything about it. I would think it would be incumbent upon you to make an ask to our Booster Club, who, by the way, I just.
They do great work, I mean, they do great work, and we love the boosters.
Donna, Donna, you need, I, I understand you were speaking. Not one person up here beats their chest and says, "This is what we've done, this is what we do." All that we say is what we can do moving forward, and that's what I've asked, number one. Number two, you are aware, and were aware, that of the plan and the idea of removing or not replacing the upper-level bleachers in the main gym. You knew those details. When Paul, before Paul left his office, you knew the details. All we wanted was help.
Mr. Nasa.
We're done.
I think what we have to look at is, there was a miscommunication.
Absolutely.
And, and as, I apologize for that miscommunication to Donna when, when we spoke earlier this week, and you can't go back and change the fact that you weren't directly asked. And so, all that we're looking at now is acknowledging that that mistake happened, apologizing for the mistake that happened, and continuing to foster the good work that you've done as a president of the Boosters Group and the Athletic Boosters has done for our students, as well as what the district has done for our athletes as well, and continue to look at how we can move this to the next level, as Mr. Nasa and Mr. Grozan said, for our students. We have, as we met with the wrestling program today, and I've met with the football program, and we're meeting Tuesday again for the turf meeting, and I'll be at your boosters meeting on Monday night. And I met with the music boosters a few months ago. It's all about, what could we do to come together as different groups to help support, which are, we're all in it for the same thing. We're all into providing an outstanding environment for the Athletic Boosters, an outstanding athletic environment for our students. And, and what we're looking at is, was already set up here, is how can we use our facilities as a piece to do that? You know, the fact that our wrestling program never had its own space, and now for the first time in their history that I know, they're going to have their own space. And we look at the fact that when we have a weight facility, a weight room facility, that you can barely fit one small team in there, let alone multiple athletes, multiple sports, in our, our P.E. classes, and, and updating that. Looking at our turf project, looking at our gyms, it is time that we all work together for the betterment of our students. And I know in speaking to you, you feel that same way, and I look forward to working with you on this. And at this time, I'd like to ask Andy Jawan, our athletic director, to come up to share an update, not only to the booster group, but also to our community. We've talked a lot about, in terms of excellence with athletics, our turf project. A piece of that that we're ready to share now is, is our ideas and plans for what our new, our, our new weight room, and Andy's got a new title for it, will be for our students. So I'll turn it over to Andy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Reiba, and thank you, Mrs. Pelco, and Mr. Anagnostu, and the rest of the school board for having me here tonight. I think, to Mr. Nasa's point about moving forward and things not being done, business as usual, the Booster Club has made a lot of strides this year in just my seven months reorganizing their bylaws, their, the way that they do business. And, and frankly, I brought a lot of ideas to them that I think maybe were uncomfortable at first, and some changes that we asked them to make just so we can conduct business better. And I would like to commend Donna for her work as the Booster Club President and accepting those changes and being willing to embrace new ideas. And I believe Donna has announced that this is her last year as the Booster Club President, and after serving fifteen years, I would like to thank her for all her efforts and certainly for everything she's done in my short time here. So speaking of the weight room, the current weight room, and our plans for our new performance and conditioning center, I put a few slides together so that everyone knows exactly what we are working on. It's an exciting time to be here in Strongsville, certainly in the athletic department, where we have the Excellence in Athletics campaign going, and a lot of improvements coming for our athletes, and the new performance center is part of that project. And so that everyone is aware of where we're at with that, and what our vision for that is, I put a few slides together for your consideration. So during, due to the current renovation at the high school, which everyone's aware of, we've had to move our weight room to Pacquettan Stadium in the home locker room. Certainly not ideal conditions. As a temporary home, we're making it work. Our kids are, there's been no gap in their workouts. There's been no delay in anything that, any programming that they've been able to do. Thank you, in large part, to our coaches, who have been very cooperative with all the inconvenience. Right now, out of our twenty-four teams, fourteen are regularly scheduled time blocks in our weight room. On a weekly basis, we're serving over five-hundred-and-twenty student athletes. During the summer, those numbers grow. The other ten programs are using the weight room seasonally. So when I talk about fourteen teams, they're regularly scheduled time blocks. Also, our physical education program uses the weight room. And considering the current state of the equipment being obsolete, mismatched, not from the same manufacturer, some of it's out of date. It's been moved several times, which includes taking it apart, reassembling it. It is time to address the weight room and make the upgrades that we need. These are a couple photos of our current weight room out at Pacquettan Stadium. You can see in the bottom photo, there's fourteen kids working out, and that almost completely fills the room. When you have a football team of a hundred kids, even a basketball program of twenty, it's just not suitable for a district our size. Why is it important to have the kind of facility that we want? Number one, health and safety of our students. Weight training, proper weight training, conditioning is the number-one factor in injury prevention. Not to mention promoting our athletic program and retaining our own students, giving them a reason to have pride in their program, keeping our Strongsville students in Strongsville. Especially when they see the surrounding communities and other choices they have when selecting their school, the upgrades they've made to their facilities, why can't we have what those schools have? And now we will be able to have that option. Not to mention, a single decision that we can make in furnishing this room and doing it the right way, one chance to impact many, many classes of future Mustangs. This is a decision that we will make now, doing it the right way, designing it the way it should be, that for ten, fifteen, even twenty years of proper maintenance, it's a decision that will benefit us for that period of time. So our vision, as you're aware, as we just discussed, thank you to the school board and our district leadership in the cost savings found in the current renovation project. We are relocating what will be our new performance center to where the multipurpose room used to be, which was also served as our wrestling room, and relocating the wrestling room then to the upstairs area where the weight room used to be. Obviously, in conjunction with the renovation timeline, we would like to open in August of 2016. And the new space being about twenty-nine-hundred square feet allows for full teams, or an entire football team to be able to work out. Even two smaller groups, two smaller teams could share that space together. This is a rendering of what we think we would, what we're aiming for, what we would like the room to look like. This was designed with coach input, our athletic trainers' input, our strength and conditionings, our certified strength and conditioning trainer that's on our staff. What you're seeing here in the middle of the room are, are racks with platforms. The green rectangular areas actually would be a turf surface for conditioning, allowing for sprints, dashes, things like that, plyometric exercises. This is a three-dimensional look at it. What you're seeing, the two doors that look like they're open, those are actually leading outside. So for frame of reference, that would be like going out towards Pacquettan Stadium. And the two doors to the top left would be heading into OX2. So the way it's designed with that strip of turf, when the OX2 doors are open, you can continue, continue running through the weight room, the performance center into OX2. This is some different graphic renderings of what graphics might look like, our logos, really developing a room that our students and community could be proud of. In December, I had the chance to visit Solon High School, and I use Solon as an example, because I really view them on the east side, especially being a team in our conference, as a model of what I think we can strive for. When you look at their stadium, we played at Solon this year, what they've done with their scoreboard, with their turf installation, and then what they've done with their weight room renovation, it's really, in my opinion, the standard bearer of where we need to be. So this is an example of an actual room of a high school in our conference, a school which we'll be competing with regularly, what they've done for the benefit of their student athletes. What you're seeing in the middle of the picture there are the platform racks, which are the heart and soul of our room. We would want, we would design it so we would have six of these. It's multipurpose stations. I could certainly provide the school board and, and anyone else interested with plenty more information on why this is the way to go, but that's a, that's a real-life example of what those look like. So just an example, some of the equipment we're looking at, those double-sided racks with the platforms, which I was just explaining, the different machines that you would find in a standard room like this. A great focus on the plyometrics, the kettlebells, a lot of the conditioning. We don't want to just, it's not just for strength, it's for conditioning. It's for stretching. It's, it's really to get our athletes and, and make it multi-use, not just a football weight room in the traditional sense. Costs, we've had some estimates, just so we know exactly what we're dealing with. Obviously, this has not been sent out for any type of bid. We're looking at about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the equipment that we feel we need to make that, that room that we envision a reality. How do we do this? Different ways, fundraising, obviously. Any direct ask to our booster group, that would be a great opportunity for them to be involved. Sponsorship, community partners, cost savings. For example, as, at the same time as we're going out for our Excellence in Athletics campaign, talking to our partners about being involved in the turf project, this is another arm of our campaign, as we're talking to our partners in the community and anyone else that might be interested in helping out with such a project. So, that's basically an overview of where we're at with the weight, the, the new performance center, as we're calling it, project. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
I'll just make a couple comments. The idea was brought originally to us by Paul, our former A.D. And he came up with a creative solution and a means to maybe fund this project. Because I wish, we had some pictures of the old weight room. Cameron, we went and looked at it. Some members of the Facilities Development Group that are in the audience will be presenting their findings or third-year plan earlier. We walked it. Not only are we swapping spaces, but we're building walls in the old weight room area so that the wrestlers have their own space, but also a safe space to be. We're also changing the HVAC issues that we have in that multipurpose room, because there was a high, too, high level of humidity in that room. The idea of the artificial turf, the strip, I mean, everything was, Paul did a great job when he came up with this whole idea. The reality is, we can't service, we can't have enough athletes in that space to provide the kind of conditioning that other schools are doing. Ultimately, I mean, and my son, my son's only nine years old, but there are children, and families pay for those children, that are in our athletics, in our community, to outside firms and gyms, inside our borders, paying a lot of money for supplements, because we can't provide it. The district came up with creative ways, the Facilities Development Group came up with creative ways, the advisory group, I should say, to make this happen. This is important. And like you said, Andy, it's not just for the kids today, but this will impact our children, our programs, our phys ed programs for years to come. That's why it's so close to my heart that, you know, we all pulled together to get this, something like this done.
Just to elaborate on that, I think we are constrained with our current space that we can't offer additional programming, such as getting our rec leagues, our youth leagues up, to, to really come work with our coaches as well. The new space will allow that. The impact will be felt, a wider range within our community with the new space, if it's done the right way.
Excellent, okay, good.
Thank you, Andy, and I'd just ask that if you can work with Donna and make sure that this is on the agenda for Monday for the boosters meeting, and we can give this presentation to our boosters group, that would be a great opportunity to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nasa, with your permission, I can continue with the superintendent's report.
Please do.
Under Business Services, there's a, two items and then an addendum that kind of goes with it. We're at the, the point in the construction where the, some of the technology equipment that is currently housed in the basement of the old board office needs to move to its new location of Strongsville Middle School. So, the first item, A1 for your consideration, is movement of the dark fiber head-end equipment, and that's to be paid from our OO4 construction fund. However, before I read the resolution and turn it over to you, there's a couple changes that we need to make on the resolution. First of all, we have a new exhibit. It's actually a part of the addendum, it's the green Exhibit C. So on the agenda, if we could change, instead of Exhibit A, this should be referring to Exhibit C. And just as a point of reference, this doesn't have to be written anywhere, but this is pages eighteen, nineteen, and twenty of Exhibit C. That's what this is referring to. And then, as you could see on, I believe it's page nineteen, we need to change the quoted price of fifty thousand dollars. The quoted price is now zero dollars. So, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the dark fiber head-end equipment move from the I-NET system to be performed by Time Warner Cable from Center Middle School to the new Strongsville Middle School at the quoted price of zero dollars. Funding, it's kind of insignificant now, but funding would have been through the OO4 Middle School Construction Fund, and again, Exhibit C. So it is for a vote, Mr. Nasa.
Do we have a motion?
Some move.
George, either first, second?
Second.
Second by Richard, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Nasa, I will be recusing myself from this series of votes for a couple of reasons. Number one, because I work for one of the competitive bidders that bid on. Number one, because I work for one of the competitive bidders that bid on this contract. And number two, because I was not completely pleased with how this was handled from the beginning. So that's my comment. Sorry, Richard, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Duke. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible because this is one big pile of soup. But the, what, what I would like to discuss is this is our overarching telecommunications project. And we really have three silos that we're discussing. The first silo is our phone circuits. The, the geek term is PRI circuits. And those are the, that's the connection we have to make all of our phones work throughout the district. All those nice new Cisco VoIP phones work through the PRI circuit. And we also have a handful of what are called plain pots lines. The old-fashioned kinds of circuits or the old-fashioned kind of phone lines that we have. We have a number of them throughout the district, whether they're pots lines, whether they're Centrex lines or whatever. The jargon muddies the water. But those are the circuits or the phone lines that we use for our security system, for our fire alarms, things like that. The two PRI circuits handle all of our phone calls. So when you call in to call your child off for sick, or you call in to talk to anyone in the schools, you're talking on those PRI circuits. So that's silo number one. Silo number two is our internet access. The internet access is, as we move forward, more and more essential for everything we do. Whether it's grades, whether it's learning on the Chromebooks, whether it's teaching opportunities with YouTube and the different ways to collaborate with other students within the district and other students outside of the district. All of that, as we know, you need the internet for. And then the third silo is the cable channels, the PEG channels, the public education and government channels. And that's how the three or four of you who are watching this at home are able to see this meeting. So those are the three, the three silos. And the original incarnation of this, we were looking at over a hundred thousand dollars just to get everything out of the board building, Center Middle School, and into Strongsville Middle School. Which, quite frankly, was, was unsustainable and the entire district pushed back quite a bit. The, the project, we have done such a good job with everybody being diligent of saving every dollar and making every dollar go as far as it can. The thought of spending a hundred thousand dollars just to move our, our current telecommunications infrastructure out of the board building, out of Center Middle School, into Strongsville Middle School was, was unacceptable. So we kept on working on that. The comp, the, the decisions that have been made, the decisions I'm recommending that we consider. Time Warner, currently, Time Warner does not do our, our phone circuits. We did put that out for bid. They came back as one of the, the strongest bids, one of the least expensive bids. In addition to that, they would be able to forego fifty thousand dollars of install to move our internet fiber circuits from Center Middle School to Strongsville Middle School. Which made it, obviously, the lead as far as financial prudence is concerned. So moving forward, all of our phone circuits and our internet will be housed within Strongsville Middle School where it needs to be. That'll be our new hub, the new central area for the entire district. The last piece of the puzzle was those PEG channels. And that was another fifty thousand dollars to move the PEG channels from the board building, where they are now, to Strongsville Middle School. And unfortunately, that's just an unacceptable cost. Especially when we realize that cable TV is a dying technology. More and more people are unplugging from cable TV, more and more people are not signing up for those cable channels. So the thought of spending fifty thousand dollars of, of the district's money, I would rather suggest, you know, we spend fifty thousand dollars to get streaming technology, to get our information on YouTube, things like that. That's a whole, that, that would be a better way to spend that money. The city is, is doing that already. They, they are investing and they stream the city council meetings and things like that. So trying to wrap it up, it makes sense and it's the best decision for financial prudence to approve Time Warner becoming the new vendor for our PRI and our phone circuits. Because of that, that fifty thousand dollar cost to move the fiber so that our internet continues to work is now zero. I like zero a whole lot better than I like fifty thousand dollars. I'm, you know, when we get to the next one, I'm recommending we don't pay the fifty thousand dollars for the PEG channels. And to be very clear, that means there's going to be a period of time where Time Warner Cable, those PEG channels will be dark or they won't be able to have these exciting board meetings. Or more importantly, the activities our children ha, engage in, whether it's music, whether it's sports, et cetera. I would suggest to the public, if those channels are important to you and you're a Time Warner Cable subscriber, let Time Warner Cable know and let them know loudly. And if, if at the time they go dark and, and they, and they stay dark, there are two other providers in the community, Wide Open West and AT&amp;T, who will continue to have our PEG channels and act as a consumer in your best interest. As an aside, I, at the last meeting, I did compliment John Bedford from the city, who has been a true friend of this district. And I've had conversations with him and Paul has had convert, Paul Consiglio, our network manager, has con, has had conversations with him. And we'll be working very diligently to see if there's some partnership we can do with the city to be able to forego spending fifty thousand dollars, but work with the city to perhaps get those PEG channels with Time Warner Cable working. So as an individual board member, I'm, I'm recommending that we do approve this along with the subsequent addendum. And unless there's any questions, I'm just going to thank Paul for all of his hard work. There's been a ton of numbers to crunch and make sure every T is dotted and every I isn't in the right place. And it's been a lot of work, but it's been worthwhile work because, again, it will benefit our students. Not just now, not just when Strongsville Middle School opens, but into the future.
Any other comments? So to be clear, Richard, you're recommending that we vote yes on number one and we don't approve number two.
That is, that will be what I vote.
Move on. Okay. Any other comments? Should we vote?
I have a comment about the second one, not the first one. I have a question to ask.
Okay. All right, dialogue, take a vote.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
And Colonel Evans, if you abstain.
Abstain.
Oh, Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On item two, PEG circuit move from the OO4 construction fund, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville Board of Edu, Board of Education approves the PEG circuit equipment move for Time Warner Cable, channel twenty-two, to be performed by Time Warner Cable from Center Middle School to the new Strongsville Middle School at the quoted price of fifty thousand dollars.
Have a motion. No?
Yeah, do we have to, we have to get a motion to put it on? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Richard. Discussion?
And again, just to piggyback off of it, Mr. Neso, fifty thousand dollars to move the PEG channels i, is too high a burden for a technology that, again, is waning. It reminds me a lot of the, when you see the different battles in the paper where the cable company says, we're going to lose ESPN, call ESPN. And ESPN says, we're going to lose, you're going to lose ESPN, call your cable companies. I think our programming is excellent, minus the board meeting. The sports, the, the music, the, the show choirs, all of that stuff, I think is great, is great content and worthwhile to put out to the community. But at fifty thousand dollars, I would rather see us allocate that money to more modern ways of doing that.
Cam, go ahead, Richard, go ahead. Cameron, I just wanted to know what your thoughts were.
I agree with what Mr. Miko stated. Looking at a one-time fee of fifty thousand dollars, when we look at the WOW Cable and the other companies that we work with to move that, it is significantly a more cost-effective rate. So I am in support of the recommendation that, that it is an exorbitant cost to, to move that PEG channel to the new middle school.
George?
Don't we pay Time Warner and other companies on our bill, for those who have Time Warner, a certain amount of money for these types of channels?
We pay a franchise fee. And part of that franchise fee does become funding for PEG channels. So if you, if you have righteous indignation, you are well within your, within your position.
And AT&amp;T and WOW, they're going to, for a fraction of the cost, help us move that information over. But Time Warner's saying it's going to cost us fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. And AT&amp;T is a much more modern technology. It is internet-based. So there's very little, if any, cost to making that move. The cost is us moving our equipment and making sure it's operating in Cent, in Strongsville Middle School. There's a, there's a reasonable cost from Wide Open West to move that equipment and to move the, to bring in new fiber to make that happen. And Time Warner Cable is asking for fifty thousand dollars.
I'm in complete agreement. I just, as you guys look at your technology and what to do from here, remember that a large part of our viewing audience, if you want to call it that, isn't as technol, technologically advanced as my nine-year-old. So just keep that in mind when we start making those, but I'll, I'll forego to you guys' recognition.
And didn't AT&amp;T, didn't they donate their equipment? Wasn't, when we went with?
Yeah, we had portions of the, when we went to AT&amp;T, we did have portions of.
It was a piece of equipment that was fairly expensive and I bought, I mean, I.
They were, they collaborated with the district to get us up and running with AT&amp;T, yes.
Eighty grand worth of equipment they donated? Okay. All right, let's have a vote.
Mr. Grozan?
No.
Mrs. Ludwig?
No.
Mr. Miko?
No.
Mr. Neso?
No.
Colonel Evans?
No.
Motion does not pass.
You convinced me.
All right, if we can go to the addendum, the first green sheet, number three, eight, six, eight, three. This is what Mr. Miko referred to as the, the last piece, which is our telephone service, which would come out of the general fund. Be resolved the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education approves district telephone service through Time Warner Cable. The cost, total cost for a three-year contract, including a one-time installation fee, is ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. This is a found in Exhibit C and on pages one through seventeen, break out the details of what goes into that cost.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Mr. Neso, I'd just like to add that anytime we look at these services, we do competitive bid those services and we look at what is the best overall value. And we did compare three different companies, again, for telephone service. And again, Time Warner was the best value over the three-year period.
Excellent. Any other?
Yeah, I've got to thank you. This whole matter came up during the construction projects. And we were at bi-weekly meetings and, and I'm not the technology person. I, I've called Richard when I can't get my computer to work right. So I called and asked and he took this whole issue by the horns and really drove through it. As Richard says, he drilled down on it and drilled down on it. So I want to say thanks, Richard, because I, there's, this is just not me. He put a brick in front of me, I can understand it, but not technology, so thank you.
Thank you, George. And I would be remiss without thanking the Strongsville team, Vicki, Mark, and Paul.
All right. Thank you, Richard. And we need a vote. I marked all the yeses already.
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Abstain.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes four oh.
Moving on to section B under technology, this was an item that we put on, we tabled from last agenda onto this one as we kind of wanted to put it together as a package. We did look at, again, we competitively bid. This is our internet service, so this is what provides internet to all of our buildings and district. Nowak has been a strong partner of the district for a handful of years. And we did competitively bid this again through multiple providers. And Nowak, again, came out to be the best value for the district. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the agreement between the Northern Buckeye Education Council, Northwest Ohio Computer Association, and the Strongsville City Schools for E-rate eligible services of a thousand megabytes or one gig of bandwidth at an annual cost of forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and web content filtering at seventy cents per student, be approved to provide unbundled internet access from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirty of two thousand nineteen, which the details can be found in Exhibit B.
Thank you. That brings.
Miss, I just wanted to quickly comment. This is the circuit that the entire district operates under. It's also the circuit that allows the district to access all the databases we need to access for EMS and for grades and for George's accounting software. Everything comes through this circuit. So while, while one gig does sound fantastic, and it is, we do need it. And the other part that I did want to highlight is the web filter, the web content filtering. And that is, it's not perfect, nothing's perfect, but it is so very important to keep all of our children safe.
And Mr. Neso, that concludes my report.
Thank you. That gets us item seven, consent calendar, all items with an asterisk. I voted on in one vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Second, George. Any discussion, any items, any exclusions, any changes? I don't think so. Do we have a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes. Brings us to item eight, board policies. This is the third reading for a number of our policies. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion, any of the policies?
Mr. Neso? I'm going to be quick. I'm going to be so quick, you'll be amazed.
All right.
The majority of these policies basically bring us into compliance with state and federal law. The two that I will, or three I will highlight are Policy twenty-four sixty-one, which is important for our IEP and any other of our, other of our special ed students. And it basically says, if you're going to go to a meeting, we want you to be at that meeting. We want it to be a collaborative and open meeting. And we don't want to have any gotchas with covert recording and microphones and things like that being hidden. The other one, fifty-four sixty, is graduation requirements. I'm very pleased with that one because it's a whole heck of a lot easier to read and understand. Whether you're a parent or a high school student, you'll know exactly what you need to do to get your diploma. And then the last one is eighty-four fifty-two, which is automated external defibrill, defibrillators. Say that three times. And the, the important thing is, is as a policy committee, we did discuss, if we're going to have a policy on AEDs, we better have AEDs at all of our buildings, not just the buildings that we have students at, but buildings where we have employees. And so that did come out in conversation and we are going to do that. We will have AEDs at any building that we have people, students, personnel, the public at. And that's it.
Excellent. It was very quick.
Tried.
A vote? Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion, motion passes five oh.
That gets us to item nine, Board of Education Other. We have one listed item under Other, which is the Board Facilities Development Committee's thirty-year plan presentation.
All right, good evening. I'm Dave Harbart, a member of the Board Facilities Development Committee. And along with Ken Evans, we'd like to present our recommendation for the thirty-year plan.
Dave, there's a clicker on your podium.
Is there? It's clearly not a musical instrument. I'm a Mac guy, so can I tell you? This is our committee, and a few of them are here to help us represent today. Our committee began the planning process slowly by assessing the background requirements for all the stakeholders. And behind me, you can read the slides of the things that we've done, and the people that we're understanding that our decisions would affect. We looked at where the district was as well as where we are now. Thanks to voters approving an $81 million bond issue, we will soon have a new middle school and a renovated high school as the foundation for moving forward. And you can see the list there of things that have happened. Thanks to an active oversight by Citizens Committee and critical state educational standards, our bond-issue projects overall have come in on time, on budget, and on quality. Reports about each of these projects have been made regularly at board meetings, so board members and the voters who supported their funding know the exceptional value from this investment. Strongsville has a population of residents that raised a family and attended the schools, but the parents just don't want to leave. It's a great city. So enrollment has been dropping. But if we follow the pattern of other communities, at some point, homes will turn over and young families will again bring kids to the schools. There are lessons to be learned from their experience. Committee members have done their best to anticipate what the future holds for our community. And you can see the different things that we've looked at in some of those studies that we've done. Along the way, committee members considered a number of significant variables. We think everyone will agree that one of the most important reasons any family has chosen Strongsville as a home is the quality of the schools. It's a fact that good schools mean high volume or high home values and desirability. We spent a lot of time, we've evaluated and analyzed, estimated, assessed, reviewed, and examined many things during our process. It was exhaustive, and yet we learned we could not control the variables. There are certain things we just can't nail down. The bottom line was that we tried to ensure that what we recommend is flexible and adaptable, yet gives a solid framework upon which to build for the future. There's some points that we've made as well. And this presentation will be on the, I think, the board website later on. So how hard can it be to propose a vision for the future for the district, especially a concept with details to follow? We have called this report Vision 2050, as we intend this to be a goal for where we want to be. And, you know, that list that we recommend is one high school, which is renovated, which we have, or is, are in the process of doing, one middle school, which we have a new one coming online soon, one preschool that has been renovated, and five elementary buildings, one in each quadrant and town center, which allows controlled building distribution for a growing and shifting student population. And to further expand on that, I'm going to bring Ken Evans to the podium.
Thank you, Dave. When the committee worked on everything, we spent a lot of time looking at the history of the district and trying to figure out where we were. And if the plan that we've just showed for where we want to be at 2050 sounds familiar, you may remember that there were a lot of people who worked on the bond issue campaign a number of years ago. And when the bond issue was in the planning, they looked not only at what that bond issue was going to do, but perhaps what the future of the district might look like. And so the committee started from scratch as the Board Facilities Development Committee. We didn't just dress up any old ideas. We didn't take everything that was there. We took everything off the table, and we started from scratch. There were no sacred cows, and in the end, we came to the same realization as that bond committee in 2012, that we think it is a framework, a concept, a plan that we can go with for the next number of years. And we think it's important that we have a plan to work towards. If we look at the current elementary buildings that we have, Maraski is the oldest, we have Whitney, we have Sarar, Chapman, and Kinsner, and we've now taken Zellers out of service and created the Board of Education here. We have a renovated high school, we have a new middle school. These buildings that we have renovated and created as new are good for a long period of time. But that leaves us, then, to consider the elementary buildings. With the oldest being 60 years old and the newest being 20 years old or a little bit more, we know that there's a lot of work that has to be done on these buildings. Back at the time, the bond issue was proposed for the new middle school and the high school renovation. We know that the OFC at that time had looked at the buildings and estimated a cost of $7 to $9 million on each elementary building to bring it up to current standards. So part of what the Board Facilities Development Committee looked at was the cost of those changes that would have to be done to bring the elementary schools up to current standards. Some of the challenges that are involved in those buildings deal with the heating and air conditioning, the roof, electrical systems. We have a list of deficiencies that we know are things that would need to be done in order for those buildings to be in service for the coming period of time. Part of the evaluation of the Board Facilities Development Committee, then, was to take a look at those needs and determine, was that the best investment? And so what the Board Facilities Committee looked at was really what the value of an investment was, because we knew that funds were going to have to be put into the elementary schools. So we looked at a number of options, including the fact that for those buildings, which, again, the three buildings that we know have the most challenges, we could repair or renovate, or we could repair and renovate and replace. And the committee members looked at the cost to renovate, the cost to replace. There was no question in our minds after we were done that the best investment of dollars for the district was going to be a combination. And it was painfully obvious that those two choices had advantages and disadvantages. When we looked in particular at the buildings for either choice, we knew that Maraski and Kinsner were going to be the same. This would involve renovations and work on those buildings. That was a no-brainer, that those two buildings were still serviceable, and that the renovation cost was going to be a good investment over the long period of time. As we looked at the three elementary buildings that we felt were significantly deficient and needed a lot of repair work and a lot of renovation, the choice was whether or not the funds should be invested to keep them, or whether it was better to go a little bit further and replace them. And these were the options that were driven by conditions in the buildings, which were identified by the OFC back in 2012, and we felt were things that would be an efficient use of taxpayer money by replacing rather than renovating. When we look at the final results, what we felt is that we've got one high school, we've got one middle school, we've got one preschool. Our estimation of looking at the entire situation was that it would be best to have five elementary schools, one in each quadrant and one in the center of town. And as we laid those out on a map, we're convinced that because of transportation, having neighborhood schools, which we think add value to a community at the elementary level, that this is the route that we should be going. This is not to say that a particular elementary, other than Kinsner and Maraski, are going to be at a particular place, because those two are existing buildings. The other elementary schools, there are options that are available. The Board Facilities Development Committee looked at a lot of options, and to be honest, those considerations will come down the road. Again, this is a framework. The actual placement of new buildings would have to be done once we look at things like soil condition, available property, and things like that. But we're committed to the idea that the four quadrants should each have one and one in the center. That does allow for flexibility when we're looking at growth and minimizing disruption in terms of where students might go. So for us, as a committee, looking at this plan of 2050, looking ahead down the road 30 years, our estimation is that the plan would involve critical repairs to the current elementary buildings, keeping everybody warm, dry, and safe, and then updating the DeJong population projections so that we have current ones. We did not establish a timeline for this. Our goal is to put a framework in place so that we have somewhere to go. There are many variables that will have an impact, including the critical renewal levy that will most likely go on the ballot in November. The committee is committed to maintaining and defining the structure of this plan as we go forward, but this would be an outline of the plan, a framework or a concept to move from. And it would include new buildings as replacement buildings at some point along the process. The additional considerations that we did were based on the fact that these are taxpayers that came together as the Board Facilities Development Committee. We understand that this is an aggressive plan. Many of the members know the value of the schools, because we have family members that went through the schools, were teachers at the schools, and no longer have students. But we want to ensure the future generations of families here in Strongsville that they will have the same advantage that we've provided in the past. The committee hopes that the accountability that we've shown on the bond issue, the work that's been done right now, will retain the respect of the voters in the future. There is no substitute for doing things the right way. As we look at the ideas that we're proposing, there is a cost as well to maintain buildings once you have them. We currently have a permanent improvement fund that is there. It's a levy that puts money into the schools. It's about $1.1 million every year. From that, $300,000 is being used to pay off the Maraski addition. That leaves about $800,000 per year for maintenance of the buildings. With a plant and as many facilities as the district has, the Board Facilities Development Committee does not feel that the $800,000 that's available for maintenance is enough. And we recognize that the only way that we can remedy that is to have a very small permanent improvement levy at some point along the way, and that will be a recommendation at some point down the road. But in the spirit of making sure that we are disclosing everything in terms of what we think this framework should be, we want to make sure that there's a stable source of funds to maintain the buses, the buildings, and the technology that we are creating. What does this do for Strongsville? Well, I think at this point that we don't have all the answers, but we're promising a concept, or we're proposing a concept, I should say, that will be a framework for the future. The task is to communicate as we go so that there are no surprises. We want to make sure that everybody understands the costs and the benefits as we propose this plan. It is not sustainable to always be reactive. Our district has tended not to focus on the future, but we've gone from one thing to another, and we feel that there needs to be a plan that has a long range to it, that can be sustainable, and have the adjustments as we move through the plan. So what the Board Facilities Development Committee is proposing is a starting point. Again, we've not attached dates, we've not attached dollar amounts to this. These are things that, after 12 months of talking about a plan, we've decided that those things will need to follow. You can't just shot them, they've got to be worked on. If you'll think of it as using a navigation system in your car, unless you tell it where you want it to go and what route you want to go, you're not going to get there. But even with a guidance system in your car, there are times that you have to make adjustments on your route. And that may be necessary to this plan. But we've set a proposal for a destination, and we think that that destination is a place that we can go as a community. So we're pleased to recommend the plan to the board tonight. Again, the committee members that are on the committee are on the report. We will recommend this and ask that it be available on the board site so that people can go and take a look at it. But this is a plan that we are recommending after 12 months of study from the Board Facilities Development Committee with the assistance of the administration, and certainly we feel that this is the place to go. So, Mr. President, that's our report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And David and Ken, thank you for presenting. And I know that the group, the entire group, were very hard on this. There was a lot of spirited discussion, a lot of data was looked at. I appreciate the fact that you didn't flesh the whole report out, that you didn't try to fill in every detail, that it's just, it's a direction that we're going to go, it's something we're going to work at over time. It's a great place to start, and we're just going to work through it. I think it was really, I appreciate all your efforts, and thank you.
Mr. Neso?
I'm sure there's plenty to...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Nope, go ahead, Jane.
I just had kind of a general question. I appreciate all the work that goes into this, and as someone that's followed enrollment trends for 17 years, I can appreciate that you can take a picture of our enrollment, and 20 minutes later, it changes. So it's not an easy task. That being said, did the committee come to any discussion about the size of the school buildings that would be optimal for elementary as far as enrollment? Because right now, our buildings are all so drastically different.
They're all different.
Right. Did you come up with some target figure?
Included in the report here is an estimate that we had from GPD, who is the architect that we're working with on the middle school and the high school renovations. They said that they could build and have been building elementary schools that are capable of housing 300 students, and the cost was between $9 and $12 million, depending on the accoutrements in that building. So as we looked at the structure of the buildings, we did not estimate the exact size for the buildings. We know what Kinsner can house, we know what Maraski might be able to house, but at this point, the new buildings that we are saying should replace the three that we feel it would cost more to rehabilitate and renovate than we think it is worth, those three new buildings, we have not determined an exact size. Part of that is that we need to look at the land and see what it can accommodate, but I think the Board Facilities Development Committee, in looking at the three buildings, did feel that we should build all three exactly the same. Perhaps a different fascia or something on each one to give it some character, but the guts of the building would be exactly the same, which would lend to synergies in terms of architect and design and bidding out and everything else, making sure that the new facilities have things like the gym that we've provided at Maraski and Kinsner, so that the elementary schools really have a full functionality in the community.
Okay. So you're saying about 300 was what you're...
300 was an estimate, and we...
And even though that's like half the size of Kinsner, just to give people a reference point, okay?
To understand that, yes. But again, part of what we have proposed in here is that we make sure that DeJong updates. And because we're thinking that this would be ideal if we could complete the elementary structure of this concept by 2025, that's a ways down the road. We believe that during that time, with opening the new middle school and seeing what impact that may have on the district, that that would be an appropriate timeframe to be able to determine exactly what size those buildings might be.
And then one other question. Did you ever consider expanding our preschool needs? I know sometimes there's talk in making preschool a mandatory for all children. I mean, what would the group's recommendation be if we need an additional preschool building? Or was that not discussed?
I think David would probably agree with me. Our crystal ball is no better than the one that you guys have. The Development Committee, in looking at all these things, looked at the current situation and tried to frame what we might do if we had to. And I don't think at this point that we're anticipating that the preschool needs are going to change dramatically. If, in fact, all-day kindergarten or other things come about, that's going to affect the elementary buildings, and we'll be able to address that as time goes on.
Well, and we'll certainly have land should we need to build a building someplace. So, well, thank you very much.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Just to add what Mr. Evans had shared, you know, we've projected enrollment in the district for the next five years, and every year, at the elementary level, and every year, it gets a little less reliable, because you're using placeholders for your kindergarten students. But if the projections stay, you really are looking for Kinsner and Maraski to be around the mid-low 400 range. You're looking at Whitney to be the upper 300s to low 400s, and then Chapman and Sarar will be that 320 to 350 range in there. But one of the things we have to take a look at is, as we close Drake this June, and we've already reassigned those students to their new buildings, that's something that we are going to have to take a look at as a district to see, as all of these building closures happen and boundary assignments are there, how does that impact the enrollment in each of the quadrants of the city, as Mr. Evans and Mr. Harbart detailed. So that's going to be a big piece of it. But that is, if all things stay consistent, which they don't, but if they do, that would look at the general trend for the buildings if everything stays the same as the boundaries will be for the 16, 17 school year.
Thank you. Thank you.
One other comment is, the Ohio Facilities Development Committee, or the Commission, as we called it, because they changed their names a couple of times, have already given us a commitment, that when we get closer to the idea of putting a bond together, we start looking at, getting closer to our timeframe, that they'll actually come back to us and help us pay for the De Jong study. So that when we built the middle school and we started that project, the task force, as we were there together, that study was done for us. So that before we start laying down brick and mortar and start paying someone to design a building, we'll have those ideas and square footages, needs, and things like that. So that'll be one of the things, part of that process of looking at this document on a yearly basis, presenting this to the community and the district on a yearly basis. And those are some of the variables that we just can't put our finger on.
One more comment before Mr. Miko. I just want to, just thank you, Ken and Dave, and I know Jim had to leave, and Manjeet and Kristen and the other committee members that couldn't be here. It's been a lo, long time, a lot of work, and the comment that I just wanted to make is, a year, I think it was a few years ago, we had a facilities task force to look at what we were going to do with the building closures, and one of the ideas, as we charted those out, is we really need a thirty-year plan for what we're doing with our facilities to, so to see that idea come to life in the presentation tonight with an outline of where our facilities are going as a future, and I just want to echo Ken's comment, and I feel passionate about it, that we need to be a proactive district, and we need to, there's always going to be those things that come up and we need to react to, but we need to be proactive in terms of our direction and vision, not just in the classroom, but also with our facilities and our structures. So I appreciate their work and seeing that idea come to fruition here tonight.
Thanks for saying everything I was going to say. But I do want to take the time to publicly thank the entire committee. It's always exciting to have you guys come and talk and present, but it is a lot of hard work, and I'm well aware of all the hard work you guys put into it, and Gail's. But at the end of the day, you're getting paid even less than we are, so it's very admirable. It shows a lot of, it shows a lot of commitment, a lot of love, and a lot of passion for what's best for our district, along with what's best for our community. You know, if you compare what we did to bring the middle school and high school renovation to bear, it was, oh, gosh, we have this golden opportunity, and we have very little time to do it. And everyone said, you have, you have no time to do it, don't even bother. But this is Strongsville, and we didn't listen to good advice, and it worked out. And we're looking forward to that new middle school, and we're looking forward to that new high school. Lightning isn't going to strike twice. So I think George says often, it's a breathing, living document. It's a nice start. Somewhere, you got to throw something up against the wall to see if it sticks. I like the fact that we're going to revisit it. I think, Ken, you mentioned five years, a little more than that, you know? Now's the time to start doing this, and now's the time to start having that conversation with the community. I'm happy to, to receive all this information, get this information out early, because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers. We have to have their investment and their approval of any projects we do. So the sooner we start explaining how we're going to invest their dollars, the better off we are. And we can modify the plan as we go along and make it as good as it's going to get closer to when we need it. But again, hats off to the committee. Thank you for all your hard work, and we look forward to continuing to receive your updates.
Thank you, Rich. Duke, anyone?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Nice job. Anybody have any other other? I do have one. And I'm coming back to the booster thing that we talked about earlier today, and I don't mean to reopen this can of worms. I want to apologize to the, to the members of the booster committee who work so hard and do so many good things. And it's funny how when passionate people start working on things like the booster committee or myself or different, this board, that sometimes people who want to be on the same side end up on different sides. That's not the intention at all. I apologize. I know that we all are working for the same thing, we all love these kids, we want to get together, we want to do it. Let's do it. Let's get it together. Let's just put this behind us and get moving. I don't want to find myself on the other side of the very committee that I've committed myself to help. So if, if I've offended anybody with my passion or my comments, I'm sorry. And I would just like to say that, you know, I want to help, let me help, let this board help, we're there to help, and, and we don't want to be on opposite sides of the same thing. We're all moving towards the same thing. We'll help, we'll work, you know, give me a broom, give me a mop, I'll help. So let's get there, and I know that every member of this table feels the exact same way. So, I mean, I just, I just didn't want to end this thing where we're on opposite sides of the fence, because we're all working for the same thing. So, so that's it. I'll stop talking. We do have need for executive session tonight, and?
Yes, Mr. Neso, we have to prepare for and to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion? Take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes five-oh.
We'll enter. We'll enter at eight-thirty. We don't have any other business after.